I'm sure.
I've been off all week.
That's funny.
All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order and acknowledge that the Tumwater School District sits on the ancestral land of the Nisqually Squawson Island and Chehalis people. I thank these caretakers of the land who have lived on and continue to live on the land since time immemorial. Please rise as I lead us in the flagged salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with due justice for all.
Thank you all. All right, Superintendent Bogutin, have there been any changes or additions to the agenda since it was published?
No changes.
All right, since there have been no changes, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
All right, the agenda is approved. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. Has the board had the opportunity to review the items on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes, is this because they did a two-year contract is why we're doing this today?
I believe that is true, that this is part of for us to move forward with the second year of their agreement, that this needed to be approved by the board.
Okay, anything else? Melissa? Okay. All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. All right, the consent agenda is approved as presented. We will now recess the regular meeting at 6:05 to enter a work session to discuss superintendent evaluation and board superintendent communication. Okay. Superintendent Bogutin, the floor is yours.
Great, well, thank you. I'm excited to kind of get things started and it seems totally appropriate to talk about evaluation before I get too far down the pathway of doing the work. And so having that clarity really is important for me. And having done this job a little bit, I have started where that wasn't as clear. And so I think this opportunity in early July is great for all of us and can provide some early direction for me. And so I wanted to sort of lay out some thoughts I had. And so I think you saw probably the email and some information on this was everything's draft, so I just want to know everything you see can be changed, including the entry plan, because I don't believe, I think I had a one-page entry plan that sort of gave a, you know, kind of a 30,000-foot view of what it would be. So this is the actual plan. And so I think part of this first-year work is successful completion of this entry plan. And so again, I think today is whether you want to walk through this, I think even just by goal to see, is there some things I'm missing, as we think about, and I don't know if that's the starting place for this, because I feel like that also says, part of my entry plan says, hey, I'm going to review this with the board, get your feedback and make sure. So success in this initial year really is around some successful pieces laid out in this entry plan that really cover a broad range of topics. It does start with goal two, with goal, goal one is sort of, I don't know if I have this out of order, so I have to like, but goal two, so the first page on goal two around effective governance. And again, I'm not going to read kind of bullet to bullet. Hopefully you've had a chance to read this, and if you've taken some notes, some feedback around, and we'll kind of capture tonight some things that I need to either add to this or some feedback on the plan. So I don't know if we just want to take them kind of goal by goal around some of this around, is this, am I on the right track with this, with the goals as well as the activities outlined here? Is that?
So a question I had is, you're providing, I think, five goals here?
Correct.
But on your evaluation success indicators, you have two focus areas.
I had, yeah, and I think, well, the focus areas that I would say in addition to the entry plan. So the entry plan being one, I think I had three, three areas of focus, one being successful completion of the entry plan.
Okay.
Focus area one is relationship with the board, which really comes around some governance. Focus area two, educational leadership, which isn't probably as explicitly kind of captured in the entry plan. And then the focus area three being completion of the entry plan.
Okay.
Yeah, so you're right, there is five goals within this. So I wanted to sort of lay out the different aspects of entry that, that kind of in time, in reflection are areas that, hey, if you're successful at this around, let's look at student success and growth and well-being, which again is looking at the educational program, what's currently going on, effective different district governance, that board superintendent relationship, collaborative relationships, so building that whole stakeholder relationships with people across. So that'll be important to look at, that goal three. I think there's a laundry list of bulleted groups. And I think, you know, some historical perspective, like former superintendents is not on there. So there's even some people that I think in my reflection of a success in this will be people meeting. Today I met with a former board chair, Jay Wood, Ben, and it was a board member for a long period of time, I think about 20, 22, 23 years. And so getting kind of that perspective of a former board member, but I didn't have that. And I think I'm probably going to meet with a couple other former superintendents and former board members. So those are kinds of things that I think come out of either sometimes conversations of, oh, this is a good person for you to meet with, or a different group to meet with. And there's things I know as I've looked at this that I think, oh, I didn't include, I think I included Teacher Education Association. And maybe I put classified, but I know in this district, I think, I've, you know, kind of learned, I think probably since I developed this, was there's additional, you know, all of our employment groups, in addition to our administrative, has a bit of administrative oversight, or an employee representation, I guess, as an administrative group. So, yeah, so I don't know if you want to walk through each one of these from, does that help in terms of that question, but you walking through each of these goals and different areas to focus on?
So is it just that it got stapled wrong, that you have goal two?
I think so. I think it looks like I got that out of order for some reason. So goal two on is, was in the front?
Chatty about goal number two or goal number one?
Let's just start with goal number two, because it's a pretty easy one to, that governance, board superintendent relationship. And I think our other agenda item tonight is really around communication. So we'll dive a little bit about that, because that is also related to this. So again, that would be an activity under even this is, hey, let's establish, establish some communication protocols or some understanding. We also have the retreat, and I don't think I've included that, a retreat planned in October, a full-day retreat to really establish more clarity around that board superintendent relationship. The national center comes with, the first part of it is around to get to know you. And I think you saw some initial like, hey, fill out this DISC profile as we learn to, like, learn more about each other and our styles and how to work together. The other part of that workshop is going to be kind of establishing board superintendent protocols around what are some expectations back and forth. And so I think we'll revisit some of these things back in October. And that would, we can add that to this level of activity that will occur. Like I said, it is establish and review regular communication systems with the board. So that is happening tonight. We can come back to any of these too, as we, so we can walk through, if anything comes to mind as we go through tonight, and we can reference back to these, to different goals. The goal number one on the next page is around student success. And so really, this is starting to meet with different, our principals and our student learning team, and getting to know them in these first few months around our systems to evaluate effectiveness, how, what does our data tell us, and spending time looking at that. So this is some evaluation of the system, as well as how are we holding each other accountable to some high standards. This will also get tweaked a bit as the board finalizes their board goals. And I think there is a board goal that was proposed around student learning. And so how do we kind of mold that into this as well?
So if I might add, I think the activities look good. However, analyzing my, you know, it'll be a year in October, okay, analyzing my time here, that I think there's only been one time whereby we actually discussed curriculum, okay. And so I think that the activities you have here with the arrows, those are good, but I'd like to see one added where curriculum is analyzed in relation to student improvement, student learning. Because we are not linking the whole equation. Because that's what's going to help kids to be able to be, achieve the success is if the curriculum, is if the curriculum reflects what the educational goals are.
From an entry plan standpoint, can you give me a little bit more guidance on what that looks like?
Yeah, so what I would say is, you have one, two, three, four, five arrows. So I would say maybe arrow number six would be evaluate curriculum and how effective it is in achieving the goal number one of exceptional student success, growth and well-being. So, you know, at this point, it's entry level, so we don't expect a deep dive. But I think it's something where we want to make sure we don't miss that, because ultimately, that's going to be the success. And then, of course, then you get into the teacher training, making sure that the teachers are trained, et cetera, to achieve the goals.
Okay. Yeah, I see kind of like coming, because I remember the teaching, well, yeah, maybe you can add to that.
That does align with the board goal.
Right.
If I, I'm just reading the really rough, rough draft. The Borg will hold the school district accountable, I put it as far as a measure to make it a SMART goal quarterly, but it could be annually. Measuring student academic progress and needs based on valid and reliable assessments with attendance, behavior, course content, social emotional learning.
Exactly. That's why I kind of wanted to blend this with that. Yeah.
Yeah, I think maybe I kind of hear two bullets coming out of this, is one is that reflection and analysis of the ABCs that are coming out of that, as well as, and then a separate one that is, I don't know if it's an analysis and probably, I would say an initial, an initial assessment or an initial review of the curriculum. The idea of its relationship to outcomes feels like a conversation for a lot of other people besides me. It is, is, and I think that's a conversation we have, and you need to hear from our principals and student learning and, and maybe others to say, do, is that a driver to improvement? Or is that what's holding us back versus, hey, curriculum's okay, even though it's dated, it's instructional practices that need to be the focus. And so I think that that conversation around, but I think, you're right, as I sit here today, I think that's a good thing to add, because I, I know I heard student learning say, we're going to develop a list of all the curriculum that exists in the district. I don't believe you've seen that. Okay, I didn't think so. So that'll be important to, I heard that they were doing that, so I will hold them accountable, because I want to see that too. And I want to know, how old is our curriculum? What's our plan to read up?
There's more to it than just seeing it. That also needs to come for review after the board. The curriculum needs to be approved by the board.
Right, yes.
Every seven years, and we can't begin to even determine when the cross-curriculum was approved.
Yeah, so I-
It hasn't been the last five, I know that, so.
So I think you started, this, just even this conversation starts to outline these processes, as you look at goal one to the side of this, this phase one, sort of this listening, understanding, questioning, this phase two, sort of processing this makes sense and coming back, and maybe then some future plans, as we take this analysis around this engagement and planning, and we start to see curriculum adoption. And I'm going to assume, based on what I'm hearing even just tonight, and what I've already known, is that we have, we've missed on some of that. And so what is our plan to get back on track with a cycle? And so coming back with maybe some proposals around what will that look like, moving into this year and beyond?
Exactly.
Perfect.
So one clarifying question. So on this page, the phase one, two, and three, is this for the whole reentry plan, or is this just for goal one?
This is for the whole entry plan. So entry being kind of focusing on these kind of, all the things that are listed in here in the next few months. So it's kind of July, August, September, October, November is, this is the primary focus of this, of the kind of, of my day-to-day work, really, between now and kind of into, and I would say, it says October, November, so I think some of this may still be happening in October, November, and coming back with, well, and some of it will be more flushed out than others. But I can already check off a lot of these that I've initially started in listening sessions. And that doesn't mean they're, they're fully, like, fully developed. I think it's around entry, around, I've met with every principal, I've met with these, and starting to hear some patterns in work. So that's really this entry plan, is this initial entry into the system. And rather than, you know, it's, yeah, developing really clear understanding, and then some perceptions and things I've learned over the next, over that first few months, not really engaging a huge, large number of people in a huge assessment of the district. So that's really my, my own personal fast-tracking growth of my learning of the district. So, yeah, I think it's doable. There's, there's, just, I know there's a lot there.
Looks a little tight, you know.
Um, I hope there, I think it says review policies. I hope there's not necessarily, I'm trying to read through all, you know, read through policies, but that is, you know, eyes glaze over. I'm trying to look through policies, certainly that are like relevant to teaching and learning, relevant to board governance, relative to some state law. I think we're working on trying to figure out, what is our policy stayed around reports that come to the board, things that are due. I'm trying to gleam, do we have those things? So that's trying to at least kind of put a, put something on it, especially with new policies. It's a new numbering system, a new kind of way of thinking about it. So it's a bit, a bit more than, when I wrote this, I think sometimes I had in my mind that I already know the, like, I know Oregon policies pretty well. I can kind of spit them out like you can with some numbers. I can do it on a letter format around complaint policy, around different ones. So I can't do that today with you. So that'll be a little bit of a learning process on really fully understanding policy, for example.
Since I am thinking of it right now, can, can we make a note? I really like the appearance of two, three, four, and five, just the way it's set up on each page. It's almost like a one-pager for goal. Can we move goal one to its own page? And can we move the phase one, phase two, phase three to just behind this sheet by itself?
Okay, yep. I have another document that I've created that kind of turns this into like checkboxes for me.
Okay.
So I think that will maybe be a document that I could share back with you, that is more of a reflection on just the completion of this. And it's all on one page with, each, below each activities are also just sort of, yes, I've checked it off, but notes, things, things I'm learning, questions I'm having. So I'm already starting to do that. So it looks like, I'll show you when the next time we meet that, what that looks like. But I, that's, yeah, because I think I maybe had the same, doesn't quite flow. Goal three is, is really this entry into this community, especially as a new person. One of the things that may be listed on here, I, I met with Scott yesterday, and we talked about leadership, Thurston County, which is a group of, I think it's run through the chamber or Rotary. I reached out to them, they're not taking applicants for this coming year. So it's really a way of, it's one day a month to hear different parts of how Thurston County operates. It's like a civic, they start with civics, government, education. I did hear from the director of that, and they put me on the list for next year. But Education Day, the focus is guess which school district. So, yeah, so Tumwater is the, their focus school district. And so I don't really know what that means. I just said, I think it's January 4th is Education Day. And so I blocked it out, and I'll be in contact with them around helping facilitate what should Education Day look like for them, and highlighting Tumwater School District. So it's maybe something to add in here at some point, but I'm not participating in terms of that stakeholder group, which is leaders from across the region. But something I will do in the future. That, that bulleted list is one that I certainly wouldn't mind your feedback, because it's maybe just an initial brainstorm. And maybe it's getting, as we have more time, or as you take this and say, well, when it says nonprofit groups, there's not really specifics. So who are the nonprofit groups that I should be in contact with? One comes to mind that I did meet with, they gave me that folder, together, and is it called Together? It's just called Together. So I have met with them, and I, so that's a group. I met with the Boys and Girls Club. So you start to kind of pull out some of these, and Boys and Girls Club is called out separately. Are there other nonprofits? So that, I don't know whether we need to brainstorm that tonight. I think that's one of those, is we meet, and as you hear my interest in this civic and community development, and who are the people I need to talk to, which groups I need to meet with, more specifically than this calls out, because this doesn't necessarily help me. It'll, a little bit. It's a good starting place. You know, I have the Tumwater Education Foundation, but now I also need to add, you know, TOPA and our other groups, and those leaders are, need to be added as a separate bullet item, and I will make sure that that happens. I met with the co-chair, I met the co-chairs of the, which group met today, bargaining, Tap met, the Tap group met today. So I got to meet the co-chairs of that and some other paraprofessionals in the district today. So that's, that was good.
Have you met yet with the bus drivers group?
I've not met, no, I haven't met with the bus driver group. I've met a few bus drivers, and I've met the director. So that's definitely on the docket to meet with and hear a little bit more. I've been a little bit slower. I'm meeting with some of our union representatives, just because we're in the midst of bargaining. I haven't been part of bargaining. And so letting that play itself out, I'm not, if they're listening, I invite them to call, and I would be happy to meet with them. I'm not necessarily, we'll do some outreach eventually, but I'm, I don't want to insert myself into bargaining, you know. So I don't, so I'm just, I'm trying to be a little cautious. I want that, let them to do their thing, and that team to be respectful of their work, and not feel like I'm trying to get off track with bargaining, or try to circumvent bargaining by, by meeting. So I have no interest in doing that, but I definitely want to meet with them, and in the first, as soon as school starts, at minimum. So there's, these bullets often, I think, these are ones that I definitely need your help, maybe not tonight, but probably each one of these. So you can just start with one of like, personal knowledge and understanding of the community, its culture, traditions, history, like, well, where do you, where should I go? And I'm guessing that's, that could be a pretty long list of, and I've started doing some of that. But I, again, I, who am I missing? And are there some people that you know that I should, that would be great to connect with?
That's going to be, that's going to be a work in progress as you, I mean, that's, that's just, that's almost like a living statement.
Yep.
It's never truly going to be a check. It's always going to be, it's circling back to and meeting new and gaining and gleaning more information about Tumwater and its history and its vision going forward, and that's one thing.
Yeah, so I think part of this is, man, who in the first few months I should get together, who in the first year, first, and, and starting to build that network and build those relationships. You know, we have a, it's not lost to me, we have a levy in, is it February or November? February, February levy. Having, being able to talk to groups, talk to people, building a team that will be supportive of that, you know, I think that's a huge, I don't know if that's spelled out anywhere in here, it may not be. I think probably when I wrote this, I didn't realize there was going to be a levy. So levy could be added someplace in here as helping, because that'll also be a venue that fits under this goal three, sharing about the levy, how we use those funds, what are the plans for those funds going forward, why is, you know, why is this important, what will happen if we don't pass this levy? So all of those, and going out to talk to our groups. It will be, if I get invited to Rotary, which I'm sure will happen, when I get invited to talk about the state of the district, I think there's a cable access or something that, that will be one of the things I will talk about. And I want to have the talking points of what has the previous levy been used for, and have we been good stewards of that, those resources?
So I, one question, how many Native American students do we have? The reason I ask is that if we do, then you probably want to add the Native American group to your meetings, because a lot of the educational stuff I've gone to, that they're really working very hard to be more inclusive, involved, and they, they often have good ideas, too.
Yeah.
So I would say that would be something worth checking. I don't know, do you know?
It'd be, so it'd be Chehalis Tribe, Nisqually Tribe, Squawson Island. We have a good relationship with Nisqually, as far as there has been invitations both directions. directions. I don't know if we have reached out to Chehalis.
I would say if you want to reach to the tribes, talk to our Chair Council for Tribal Relations, Melissa.
Okay.
She will give you an excellent path on how to reach out and contact those tribes.
We'll add that when, when Melissa comes, when our, in our next meeting, we'll flush that out a little bit. So that'll be good outreach that I, that we can do. Great, well, I'll add that to this. I think that's really important to make those connections.
I emphasize going through Melissa because that's a special relationship that we just don't throw ourselves out there for necessarily.
No, yeah, that governmental, government to government interaction is important. So yeah, we'll, we'll definitely do that.
Some.
I think I saw Melissa shaking her head, yes, that she would, will do that.
I'm sure she will.
I, if you're looking at training, it might, they, the state offers government to government training. That might be something helpful to attend.
Okay. Specifically for tribal, like tribal relation?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it talks about their sovereignty.
Okay, yeah, great.
Melissa, is that at OSPI on their website?
Uh, no, it's, it's through.
Is it through WADA?
They have, uh, it's not necessarily an agency. Darby, can you help me? Like, there's the Asian American Affairs, there's the.
Oh, the Commissions?
There's commission, I think it's, it's not necessarily a commission, but it's, it's part of Office of Financial Management, they're, they're a portion of it. And it's their office that puts on the training.
Okay. Yeah, so this could be one that, again, I welcome all of you to give me some feedback. And I think is just, this will be something I'll be asking our administrative team, our cabinet team, DLT, all these, help me make those connections and people to meet with in the next, over the next few months and specifically here, when it's a little quieter, July, August, I, you know, this, it is a nice thing. It's like I, you know, I know I'll be busier in the future. It's like I'm, I like, I love the break away from reading some policy. You know, I've been reading through, we have a couple grievances that are coming that I'm going to work with. And so I'm really going back and looking at, you know, I've looked at our agreements, so reading those again, and I know we're negotiating those. So those will be, you know, spending time and I'd like breaks from that to go be out in our community a little bit. So I welcome, I welcome the invitations. Number, goal four is around organizational efficiency, effectiveness, accountability. This is really then, this is meeting with our directors, meeting with, and really helping me understand what the current state of all of these departments are and the documents and plans and are things working? And, you know, that's an assessment that y'all can help with. Where do I spend some time, focus, energy? It could be reflected in a board goal. I, I think I come in with a broader sort of feeling that there isn't anyone that stands out that is urgent, but I can, I think I've shared with a few of you, transportation has been, you know, some concerns from parents, concerns from administration. I'm guessing concerns also for the board. It is certainly one that is, you know, we'll, we'll come back with, what is our plans for transportation? More earlier than other departments. And I know we also have, we have new, fairly new leadership in, in business services, fairly new leadership in human, human resources. So that reflection of those organizational components and departments and coming back and sharing with the board. And I think we started talking about a plan, a board plan to bring those groups and hearing more, because I'm guessing there's some interest across the whole board around hearing an assessment of human, human resources, where, you know, as a new director has come in, what are some initial things that have happened? What are things we're hearing? And even giving her some additional guidance around, hey, these are some concerns about things moving forward. So we're in the process of doing kind of that ongoing assessment of each department over this first few months and that reflection will come back. Anything else in that? We will have a conduct leadership retreat gathering, you know, funny, there's a few of these things that happen. I would say, you know, there's a, I've come into districts as an assistant superintendent and superintendent where none of this was, I came in July 1 and saying, well, is there a retreat plan? No. That is not the case here. Like, I'm, I'm walking into a week-long leadership retreat, which you're probably aware that occurred at least last year, maybe prior to that. And another sort of teacher induction, that piece, they're training all really well laid out. So this is a team that I am coming in and going with their flow of, so this kind of says I will do this, but there is things in place and it's, it's how do I kind of work my way in and start to establish and having conversations? I've already kind of, we're going to have some conversations about leadership, an ongoing, you know, service and some more broader vision, ideas, culture versus some kind of established retreat. I kind of want to do like get to, I need to get to know, but I have pretty much a team that knows each other from the administrative side of things and leadership, but we're going to still, still do some get to know you kind of icebreaker things, just even for my own benefit. And I think that also probably benefits each other. They, they sometimes think they know each other, but then when we engage in some activities, they really, they start to, a deeper knowing, like, do you really know people and how they show up and what, what's, what excites them? And we'll do some of that too, that maybe you haven't done. So I hope you'll be interested in doing a little bit of get to know you. And I think that's some of the district profile and things that we'll do in the retreat also are part of that.
I have a question. Does that retreat include district, the district leadership team?
It is advise, it is the advisory council. So all, all principals, district managers, so transportation, food service, they're all included.
The reason I'm, I was asking because like Wendy is new, Melissa is still relatively new. I think you have some people in the district office that, you know, I, the principals know each other, but they, you know, they've not worked with Wendy for very long. Just, just keep that in mind.
No, and I think that's, yeah, that's good. And how do I, how do I make sure to integrate?
Again, just, just keep that in mind that there's people in the district office that have not been part of that team for quite a while.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, so definitely some, we need to do some deliberate team building pieces in this, so, and that, we'll work on doing that. The last part of this is.
Like you said, Kevin, that's as much benefit to you as it is for them.
Oh, for sure.
Just, yeah, they'll get to know each other better, but you'll get to know them.
Yeah. And my, and the, you know, the, our team that supports them is really important. Yes, that's the, you know, the Wendy and Sean and myself, like, that they're there to support really under, a deep understanding of how they operate and how they think and how they approach things and what are they, what are they really good at? What do they need some support in? It's, we're not all great at everything. And so recognizing that and how do we support them, so, is really important. The last part of this is around culture, safety, security. And so, and, and some other broader, I think this last goal sort of seems to overlap, I think, a bit with some of the others around stakeholder and relationships. But I've already began, you know, I, I've done this work long enough to know crisis happen when, at any time. And so, you know, we started this week and, you know, sadly with one of our, you know, high school students passing away this week, very suddenly that impacts a lot of folks and what's our plan to help support people? And so we're really about, you know, supporting staff, supporting students and helping deal with trauma. And that's, that right away happened and so were our plans. And I was, again, happy to come in with plans that already exist and a team that are exist and some work that needs to happen. They have a great sort of process, but not necessarily a lot of thought of, well, what happens when that happens on July 10? And that, because that causes a bit of other, just more challenges. You know, we ended up putting a care room together with not a lot of attendance, but partly it's, you know, how are we getting that word out? How do we get a team together? Do we have a summer plan? You know, because these things happen at the most inopportune times. I mean, I don't know if there's an opportunity, maybe that's the wrong word to use. They just happen at times that are always challenging. They will happen at, we'll get notice at nine o'clock on a Sunday night. How does this plan get put into place so that we're ready on Monday morning to effectively deal with this? And at, at least the most effective weekend. I don't know if you're ever fully prepared to deal with these. And so it was good to, those kinds of things, I've already started, you know, had some, not just like, let's review the plan. I've had now practice in implementing the plan and how, let's assess how this plan worked. And so we'll do some debrief later on with this team, the crisis team, and where do we need to shore up some things so that we'll be better responding in the future? The other thing, I've had my first meeting with Stefan DeBrut, DeBrut, our safety, security coordinator. So we had a chance to meet and start to review his work and safety and his safety assessment. And, you know, we left, I probably left that meeting thinking he asked me to help support some things. And so I, one of the things I have is where is, is there a budget for some safety and security things that he wants to implement, including a reunification kit to help, helping making sure that if we have a, an event where we're evacuating an entire school to a location, do we have a system and a, and materials in place to make that go as smoothly and as effectively as possible? So he needs some resources. And so I'll work with our business services team to figure out that, a little bit of money to support student safety. So that's just even one initial takeaway from an initial meeting with him. I, I do have building walkthrough meetings scheduled with both him and Brian later this summer, just to like, what's your assessment of safety? And we look at locks and, and all these different safety components. We're also talking to our SROs and we've had a couple events for kids on the roof, for people on the roof, people coming, walking through our building. So assessing all of those things and making sure that our buildings are as safe as possible, that's really, really important. And I think I put this as a goal because it's become more and more important to our communities, the safety and security. If we can't ensure this, then we lose trust in, in the community pretty quickly. So it's important things to have in place and what we can do. So this also starts to open around positive, inclusive culture. And that's around meeting with kids, meeting with staff, meeting with parents, meeting with, and again, that comes, it kind of overlaps into stakeholders. But part of this is a more of an ongoing, developing relationships in open forums and making sure that they're, you know, I want their feedback and we want to build a culture of trust and relationships and to pass bonds, pass levies. That will happen when people know what's going on and they're supportive of the direction and mission and vision of the district. A part of this is also around, you know, again, gathering feedback and communication. And so some of these things, again, kind of start to overlap one another. That is really the entry plan, which is, it is robust and there's a lot of things in there. And it'll, it will be, it is the work of this first few months. And so it's, it gives me some guidance and direction. So it is helpful around, here's what I'm spending my time doing. It's not, it may seem sort of haphazard, but there is more directive in this. It may be like, one day I'm at a meeting with a former, former board member and the next day I'm out visiting schools, but it all fits into this plan. And it helps me know that this work isn't, the time I'm spending doing that is valued. It is, it's, we've kind of said, yeah, that time going and spending a half a day walking through buildings with grounds and maintenance, that's important piece of this entry, not a waste of time. I think sometimes people will see us walking around and just walking through empty buildings like, well, what's he doing? And shouldn't he be doing, I don't know, what people think I should be doing? And again, maybe that's like for the board, what do you think I should, if not this, what should I be doing? And so I think that's, this entry plans are helpful to give that kind of guidance around what is my day-to-day world look like in these first few months when I don't, you know, I haven't been, I don't have a history here.
So I have two questions. The first question is, do you want us to evaluate you on those seven goals?
I, I, I don't think that was necessarily the purpose of, as I created this necessarily. It is, I think, more in totality of this entry plan, saying, are these the right areas of focus in an entry plan? Am I missing something that says, if you would have said, you know, because I can tell you, there's a, a goal that's not listed here, that it'd be more focused and we tried about tribal relations, a goal focused on equity. That that, when I'm developing, I developed this maybe with a little bit of like reflection back to my current, like my previous district where that was just, was just not acceptable. And again, I didn't know, like not knowing this community, knowing the triggers of the word equity with the board that I was working with, as well as a ton of community members, I probably, knowing that these are all public documents, you don't see that as explicitly involved in here. But that could, that could be, so it's not necessarily individually, but I think as a whole, what's your success at accomplishing this? And did you do this? And that would be more what I would be asking for.
Because I think you said it in the first paragraph of goal number one. You just said it in a paragraph, not in a word.
Yeah. Yeah, it's important to me.
That's perfectly fine, in my opinion. You don't have to say it, you know, in a word. You can say it, because again, for all students, academic, social, emotional success and commitment to meeting the needs of all of its diverse learners.
Yeah. Yep, I do it without saying the word equity.
Yeah. So to me, that's fine.
Yeah.
Because again, it has to be in your words, see? And that's perfectly fine, in, in my opinion, because you're, you're addressing it, you're just saying it in more detail.
Yeah, and I think one of, you could, it's not, right, so it's not as explicit. There's not bullet, I, I can pull out where equity becomes a factor in this, but it isn't explicitly pulled out, which we could talk about tonight, if you wanted that to be part of more of my entry plan.
No.
It's fine, it's fine.
Stakeholders that you have shows.
Yeah.
There's no reason to specifically list that, it would confuse it.
Okay. Does that answer your question for that, for your first question?
Somewhat. So then my follow-up question would be, I would like by our next meeting in August, the, the goals to narrow the focus, not using this word focus, but narrow the focus. These are the goals I would like to be evaluated on for this school year.
Okay.
And then if that is, then once that has been narrowed down, narrow the focus, for me, I always like to keep things simple, you know, use the kiss, keep it simple, stupid. So, so Melissa, I am referring to the, when I, the things I'm about to talk about are the entry plan, the evaluation of the superintendent, which is just like a basic score sheet, and then the sheet that has the two focus areas, with the third focus being the entry plan.
Yeah.
For me, I would love it if you could marry these three things in a Google document. And so then that way we can easily go in and see your ongoing progress. So we see goal one, here are the checklist factors, almost like your action items, your action steps, your actionable, we see what has been done and we see your comments and then there's goal one. And we just kind of scroll down and then there's goal two, same setup, here's the goal, here's the action steps. So those action steps are these activities, almost, so to speak. But then also what have you done? Your, your measurables, your, that sort of thing. So it's, it's this format, but in a digital platform.
Yeah, and I think maybe one of the decisions tonight, as we talk about this valuation is, you know, I, I shared this that has the, you know, the, the scoring and this, it's different than the Washington. So this is a, the National Center provided this, a little bit different evaluation tool that has these A, B, C, I think it goes to I.
Yeah.
H, I, yeah, so annual objectives. So you end up with that, like the couple objectives in this. And I kind of look at it as, so this is the, the format of an evaluation tool. And I kind of look at it as, even if we say, hey, we're going to focus on two areas and it won't be all of this, and I'll be able to, and that will be the evaluation, even though when we get through this process, I will provide feedback through the entry plan as well as some of these other, that I'm doing work in these areas, it just is not the subject of more scrutiny around the evaluation. And I think one of the things that would happen is that feedback will help provide guidance in year two. Hey, this, all right, yes, we've had accomplishment in this and success, and we want you to focus on now, hey, be administration and school district and here specifically and give some very clear direction of this is the focus for year two. But I will give feedback, I think, I hear what you're saying is putting these in a format where you're getting, I'm putting some feedback of, hey, I'm accomplishing areas even though we're not evaluating this, here's work I'm doing in this, as well as this overview of the entry plan.
Yeah. I'm trying to just think of how can it be easier for us? And having to print this out when we need to see it, that's going to be a pain in the butt.
Yeah.
But just a nice digital document that we can go into and we can visually see your progress and you can initiate us, but hey, I've gone in and updated my blank, then we can go in and read that. So we're always kind of up to speed, not just having a toe dip in January and then a final in whenever. So we're always kind of up to speed, not just having a toe dip in January and then a final in whenever.
So I think it's really important to make sure that these two things are completely different. The entry plan is completely different than the evaluation as far as the, the tracking of it, because the question of, you don't need us to evaluate you on the entry plan. That makes total sense, because that's not the purpose. So me personally, all of, you know, if, if, if I'm okay with all of the goals, which I am, because we just talked about them and all that looks good, I don't need to track along with the activities that you're, that you're doing. Like you can, you can come to, you know, the board meetings and say, hey, here's an update on what I've been working on here and, you know, whatnot. But that part of it is distinct to an entry plan. The evaluation should be tied to goals that are set and those goals should be in alignment with the goals of the district and those kinds of things. So I agree with what you said in terms of need to see what that part of it looks like. One of the things that has always confused me about the superintendent evaluation is in the past, it appears that the superintendent wrote their own goals and just kind of said, here's what, here's what I'm doing. And I miss that connection with, okay, yeah, that looks fine, but ensuring that it is very tightly tied to the goals of the, the district. So that's the only thing that I would say, how, how we make sure that that part of it happens collectively.
And I think I began to do that. So this, this document that said sort of evaluations, success indicators, and as I said, focus area, it can change to goals that are aligned to, goal area one is relationship with the Board of Education, aligns with the first goal. And maybe we can flush that out a bit more, but the, this providing responsible school district governance. So that idea of board superintendent, government's relationship is really, again, an area of focus around evaluation and that, that could be part of, is that a focus that's alignment to the goal that says, hey, that's, I have a role in developing that, starting with communication and retreat and policy. And there's a lot of different, and our meetings together and developing as a team is, is again, a big, important aspect of this first year and could be like an area of focus that's alignment. And then the second one is really an academic, is tying, it probably needs to be fleshed out, this educational leadership. And again, there was a couple of things around facilitating quarterly reports from all schools, around specifically, I mentioned these in the ABCs, and then around providing a more of an assessment of student assessment and, you know, issues and things that have come out of that analysis of data. And a beginning, I say this is like a beginning of a plan that would lead to strategic planning in the future. So that's kind of like, again, I can take out the entry plan and we can leave that separate around entry plan being tied to sort of other work of the superintendent, because that really is what this is. It's if you look at all, if you look at either evaluation tool, a bunch of the entry plan is, this is the work that, that superintendents do. And it looks a little different in year one versus year two and three and four. But it, it starts to evolve over time. I know what that Washington standards base, I've used that system before, the first standard around vision, you know, visionary leadership is really though, again, that's not, that's really almost impossible to do as a first-year superintendent. Like that is not a standard to meet. It is really understanding what is the vision, mission of this district. And my initial assessment of, are we in a, is our work aligned to that? Are we doing that? Do we, do we believe in that? And then if not, and again, I know we have a strategic plan that is out of date. And so there's a future, it just is not, that's not something I can do necessarily any, or at the beginning of year, it's almost starting it at the end of year one, if that's a, a direction that the board would like to go and doing more in year two of really fleshing out a really more robust strategic plan that really then gets into an alignment of vision. So that's, these start, these standards and systems can sort of overlap or the work overlaps. I think we need to choose one or the other, kind of that Washington standards base. I have used that a lot. I have now worked with a couple of different boards who get kind of, I don't know, it feels more confusing. I think it's, the language in that isn't super clear. It's been around since, I think, 2013. I don't know what other superintendents and boards think of it. You know, it feels one of those, I can use it, it's fine. And I can tailor these goals directly to this as well. And then this National Center is one that I was provided as we've done some outreach into this group that's going to help us do a, a board retreat. They provided, you know, my mentor provided me saying this, it says, hey, we, he's done this in California and it's just boards have found it to be more, have more clarity around the language in this kind of, I guess, standards.
So does the board want to provide some information to help you make a decision between the two?
I think this is really around, do you want, I think you're making, you're making the decision, here's, here's a different one than you used last year or, you know, previous years with previous superintendents, what's your preference? Do you want to stick with the, I did, I printed off the, this, just the rubric of the Washington Superintendent Evaluation, maybe for clarity, it, it's not required. Superintendents are not, you're not required to use this system. There isn't any requirements. I think that at one point was, I think boards, it was a free-for-all at one point, probably prior to 2013 of every board doing their own thing. So this is just, again, I think California National Center using some things, probably, I don't have the relation, or the research ties that the, the Washington standards.
So if you want us to comment on it, could you provide us with something from the National Center? Similar to what you did for this, so we can?
I could, if that's, if you're interested in a little bit more, I'm sure they could provide me more.
Or we just let you pick which one you like?
Well, this is, and like your, it's your evaluation of me, which one helps you do that better?
Because I, I'm not familiar with the National Center.
Nor am I.
Yeah.
So that would be maybe, again, if you could provide us with something similar from that, that you did with the Washington Superintendent. And then if, if you want our input.
Well, I don't know, yeah, I don't know if they have that or not. I mean, I couldn't, I, this is.
Can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Please.
Go ahead, Melissa.
Okay, I'm sorry, thanks. I don't know if this, if this goes with what the evaluation is, but I see a lot of, I'm trying, everyone knows I do, this stuff makes my head hurt. So, and maybe some of it is because I don't, I see a ton of activities, Kevin. And I think for me, it would be helpful, when you said part of the goal with the outreach would be to pass the levy in the spring, you know, I don't see any outputs or outcomes. And, and maybe that would be helpful. At least that would be helpful for me, like to see or, and I don't know if, if you would find it limiting, but at least to give all these activities a purpose for people, like you were saying, walking through an empty building, you know, like the, here is why I'm doing this, not just to check it off the list, but working towards something. And which would be, I'm just thinking of a logic model, right? You have the goal, then you have these activities, and what are the outputs and outcomes, you know, that you hope to gain to get closer to that goal? Because I'm not sure how to measure, what's the first one? Sorry, I'm going back to, exceptional student success, growth and wellbeing, you know. Right now, the way that we'd measure it is to check off the list that you did all those activities. But I think we'd be interested in knowing the progress that you're making on student success, growth and wellbeing and what are the out, you know, so for me, it'd be what are the outcomes you hope to achieve?
So would you?
Does it?
Yeah. And I don't know whether that's then in student achievement, specific goals or, you know, one of the things, if you look at phase three around, is synthesizing and communicate sort of this assessment of, just on the entry plan, for example, is what's the outcome of the entry plan? Is a synthesis of all that work into a report back to the board that says, I did all these things and here are my big takeaways and maybe some next steps. So that, I mean, that's a, I don't know whether that's what you're talking about as maybe a tangible, this will, this will result, the entry plan will result in a, a report to the board specifically on this. Is that kind of what you're, because again, I think it's probably early for me to set goals that are, I don't know, the, the data-driven numerical. So this is, this is one of those things that makes my head swim to a little bit around, what does it mean to be effective and how do we measure that?
So I wonder, following up with what Melissa's saying, is that the stuff that you need to get done, like the levy, is the levy going to be this coming school year?
Yeah.
So then that would be something, like Melissa says, something concrete that we want to make sure that, it might be three things, it might be five things, rather than just general stuff, if, if you're successful, you know, what you do. I think that she's right, that, that something like that, we got to make sure the levy passes. So there are certain elements that even though you're, it's entry, that by the, whatever, you know, by the election, we need to make sure that we've done all that we can to help the levy to pass.
Right.
So that's what I.
And so it's part of, and so again, I get over whether this helps for maybe some guidance for me is, what are those things you want me to do? Is it doing those, those, those activities specifically, like tied to, or tying some of my activity, making sure to the levy versus we're going to judge you as a, you know, I don't know whether the one through five on, you know, on this one exemplary through unsatisfactory. If it doesn't pass, it's unsatisfactory. If it passes, you're somewhere.
So let me, let me, let me, that, I don't, I'm, I'm afraid for that. Like that's, that's exactly where I went in terms of, I don't want your success to be whether, because it's not just on you, it's on everybody. That's not what I'm saying.
Right.
I want, I want to understand and I don't, what is the intentionality? Again, there, for me, I'm trying to understand behind, you know, beyond just checking these things off the list, what is, what are, and I see these big lofty goals, which are great, no one can argue with that, but I'm, I'm trying to figure out what the in-between, you know, what the in-between is, because you're not going to be able to do all of it. So in the effort to try to meet these really big goals, then nothing gets done. That's what I've seen in the past, you know, with everything. And maybe that's just how it works, that we keep doing these activities, but I've not seen any measurement of how we get closer to goals. And I'm wondering if what's missing is that we don't have these, you know, these outcomes that we, that we can measure. And if, maybe it's not the levy, you know, you know, whatever that is. But it seems to me that that should be an intentionality of why you might prioritize something over something else, because there's so much on there. And if you don't get it done, you're not a failure, but I would understand that you are prioritizing. But maybe it'd be helpful to, to know how, you know, you know, what these outcomes are that you're able to prioritize different things.
Yeah, so I mean, I look at there are certain pieces of work and whether you're looking at the entry plan or looking at these standards outlined by the National Center. I think, again, that's part of the feedback from, are there things? And I think that's the purpose of tonight is whether we pick one of these, it is, are there areas that you see in here that says, yes, this is, this is what you need to focus on more? So I mean, all of it, they, this wasn't created by accident. Like all these things are important and you're going to do a bit of all of it. Are there areas that we, I should focus on? And then I think that is the conversation of what is it, what does that look like? And that, and I think that's part of, I think we're trying to flush that a bit out. Because I, and I think I am, I don't have, I have not seen good models of this. So I've been in this sort of district level, at the table for this for 15 years now, and I haven't seen this modeled well. So it is a bit of a struggle and I wish I could provide more expertise, I think that.
Okay, so I've been searching for it, I finally found it. Okay, so our TSD strategic focus of 2223, this is where we have our main goal areas, instructional excellence, systems of support, fiscal stewardship. These are the goals of the, of the district. So whatever it is that you're doing as superintendent, need to be focused on those. So because you're new, that's why the entry plan and all of the activities that need to happen within that are really important. So what I would vision is that having that be one of them, like you've already laid out, you know, completion of my entry plan. And again, I have no intention of micromanaging, micromanaging the activities that you're doing, like entrusting that everything that we've just gone over makes sense. But then where you, where in my mind you would be evaluated is what are you doing to, you know, ensure that these goals are being met? So fiscal stewardship's a huge one. I mean, that's one that's been incredibly important to us for the last couple of years. And so the way in which you do your work and make decisions, you know, within the operations of the district will be focused on that concept of fiscal stewardship. So what I would like to see in your, in your goals that would be within your evaluation, start with those things. And then what you can do is establish what would be my goals under each of those and what are some of the activities that I intend to do or how I intend to approach that.
And I think that's where I want to come back to, so that guidance from the board around, hey, yes, focus. So again, getting really clear about what are those things? And where does that show up in the Washington state standards or in this National Center? In the National Center, there's a section that says business and fiscal management. That's where it's like, sometimes this, the National Center pieces are a little clearer around what's the work and, because I'm looking at where does that show up in the state standards? It's not, or the, it's not as simple. And I'm trying to figure out, like looking at it without diving in it, and I know this pretty well. And it's probably under standard three around effective management.
Have you seen the copy that Darby's referring to? It's got the apple on it.
I know, I know exactly, yeah, I do know exactly what that is.
That would help you, that's just a simplified, targeted way of looking at it and then whichever one you want to use. But I agree with Darby that that's a good way for you to summarize things and focus.
So yeah, so business and fin, like if that's, if that's important to have a linkage under these, so business and financial management. Looking for the educational.
Educational leadership.
And then this is also where equity is a, you know, another major focus point. And I know this got changed a bit. I finally found it online.
Is that, is that something you could make a copy for?
Yeah, the pillars.
That was the old one, the thing that got changed to the apple.
Yeah, it's now it's got the apple, remember that? So maybe you can make a copy of that for all of us, that would be great, you know, whenever you can.
The apple one?
Yeah.
Yeah, because then, you know, it has equity all around the thing.
It's just, has a lot of the terminology updated, plus the focus areas kind of simplified and targeted.
So that's district, district established goals. And then the board goal, so separating my end-up focus is on this district goal, board's going to focus on their board goals and not, I don't need to tie those two. It's like, I can like help the board be successful on their own goals.
Well, if you're doing instructional excellence, that aligns to our second goal.
Correct.
Yep.
And our first goal was provide responsible school district governance, which kind of encapsulates all of it.
Right.
So I, I think our goals are, if not the same, very, very aligned, it's just the verbiage, you know, that we need to, if we can kind of, because I, I think you're on the right track. It's just that, you know, we've set one thing and then you're coming in. So as I said, I think it's just a matter of just being lined up with a lot of the words.
I think that, that conversation and that reference back to that, that document, I think is super helpful. And, and again, I, I feel like the, this is where, having done this a bit, the National Center is a bit clearer around here's, so educational leadership, that one's probably one, the standard two instructional leadership is clear, is, is called out quite a bit. But again, you'll probably see lots of things that are the same, that are very similar. System of measurement and goals, understanding keeps informed regarding all aspects of the instructional program, organizes and actively encourages a planned program of curriculum evaluation and improvement. And there are pretty clear outcomes or clear standards that are kind of developed through educational leadership and for all of these. And I think, again, the, the business and fiscal management, business and fiscal management is not as clear to pull out through this Washington Superintendent Evaluation process.
Okay.
So I don't know whether that's helpful in saying, hey, as we go into this, this, this will provide, is, or these are the standards and this is what we have. And I think today, I just, I think setting context, we talked about introducing this and having this conversation today, maybe leaving, coming back and doing a little bit more, like rethinking on this and coming back on August 10th with a finalization on, on this. coming back on August 10th with a finalization on, on this. So there is a bit of time between now and sort of formally adopting this and providing kind of finalization and direction for this coming year.
I like that you've got a specific timeline, that's very helpful.
Yeah, I mean, I think all those really helps me understand. And, and again, as we start to build board calendars and agendas, settings time aside, knowing that, hey, these are, these are when were the touchpoints for the board and for me, it's helpful for me to be thinking of, all right, I haven't put some of this, I haven't opened this up for a little bit, I need to kind of go back and do some reflection and making sure. Because I think one of the goals for me on this is there, there, and it should be for all of us, there won't be a surprise at, when the final evaluation comes and whatever that time period is, 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 there should be nothing that is a surprise. I'm not getting feedback that I haven't already heard, and you're not hearing anything from me that you haven't really already heard. And, and that, that I'd, so the goals and the work that I was doing was aligned to the work that you want me to do. And that may, that may change. As we get to January, February, there may be something clear that says, oh, like, in this coming year, we're going to want to change direction or provide, we really want this to be done, and making that clear. And maybe like development and the, that touchpoint or outcomes, the development of a comprehensive strategic plan would be a very clear, you know, outcome that has a whole bunch of work and activities associated with it to get to the, the final document. But is that, hey, that's important around mission, vision, direction that needs to happen aligned to instructional, that instructional improvement standard, I can predict that that will always be a goal, a goal for me, a goal for you, and something that you'll want to evaluate progress on. Yeah, that does help.
So I, I have a question.
Yes, Director Beard.
Thank you. So I'm seeing, thank you Darby for finding that document. And so it seems to me, again, forgive me if I'm slow on this, that that docu, that, that a strategic plan eventually, you know, replaces that document that Darby found. And that we would all, all of, all of our, all of our parts of the organization would be setting goals in furtherance of the strategic plan. Is that how all of this goes? And maybe that's why we're struggling every year with this, because we don't have a strategic plan?
Probably. I think that makes sense to me, because it's like where, if you're saying, give the superintendent guidance in, how should I spend my time? Day to day, month to month? Where, where is tho, those focus points for me? There is the day-to-day things that just are going to happen. And if, with, in lieu of directive and very clarity, you, it is sort of a free-for-all, and whatever happens, happens, and whatever, whatever time I spend, I spend, versus very clear direction from the board that says, hey, this is what we want, and then evaluating on me on the success of that. And then I still do all these other things, but I will have some clear outcomes that we're saying, these were really important to us. And so I think that, that is, and I think it starts with a strategic plan, because I'm like, without that, I'm not sure. This is a helpful document, but even that is, those are really broad concepts, right? I think what even, what you mentioned was pretty vague. A strategic plan would clarify around what do we mean by those things? And so in lieu of that, I think you're gonna, we're gonna have to trust, it's like, we're gonna, I'm gonna take some liberty at making my own assessment of what does that mean for us today? And then hopefully over the course of, you know, the next year plus, we'll get clarity from it.
Okay, I, yeah, maybe that's why it's missing, you know, why I'm missing the outcomes, like, you, you said it, Kevin, the day-to-day will take over and we will not make any progress on our goals. And that's what I'm struggling with, is like, you know, how, how do we give you some, how do we give you something to be working towards, so then we can make progress on these goals? That, that's, that's my only struggle. We've, we've just been going through and we're get, I think we're getting closer, I'm being tough on us. But I think we're getting closer, but I'm not exactly sure how it all, how it all lines up. I know everyone is doing, doing work, and I, I'm afraid that we're not seeing the progress, because it's not all lined up to an ultimate, you know, how we would measure like through an outcome.
I think the other thing that I would add is, one reason when it makes it tough is when things are going pretty well. And so my, like, initial assessment of, of, of the Tumwater School District is, things are going pretty well. Because if it wasn't, this conversation would be much easier. It would be like, this is broken, this is, we need you to, like, this is your work to get this on, under control, to fix this, to rectify this, come back with plans, begin to implement plans, come back and show us progress towards success in X. And I have seen, I've come into organizations where it is readily apparent, like, special education is broken, and here's five examples of why, and some direction in fixing that. So that, again, I think that's where I'm also hearing is, there isn't really anything super, super clear around, this is the big problem, your, or big area that you should be spending your most attention in this coming year, because if you don't, like, that will be a problem. And if there is something, that, that is, I think, today also to help me, like, is there something that I haven't heard? This is the time, I think, to say is, hey, maybe you haven't discovered this, but this is really important for you to work on this coming year.
So I think where you will, so obviously during the course of the entry plan and all of that, those things will, will come up. And maybe this is finally where I'm going to be able to tie it together with the board goals. So we had talked as a board about how an area that going to be fair to us to say, we've tried, we have tried in the past to understand what's happening with outcomes, with educational outcomes. But we could just, we could never get there with respect to connecting with, what does that mean by way of, you know, what data we look at or whatnot. So with respect to, we, that's one of our roles, is to hold the district and superintendent accountable for educational outcomes. So one of the things that has already been, you know, started to discuss is that connection with the ABCs and, you know, asking that. So I would say that's a very tangible thing, that the board is basically requesting that we finally hold ourselves accountable, to hold the district accountable with understanding educational outcomes. Because one of the reasons why there's nothing popping up and burning in the faces of all of us is because we haven't been looking at the data. There are huge issues, because I, I look at data for a living. And we got some, we got some major problems. When you mentioned special education, educational outcomes for special education students are not great in our school district. So, but those are things that will come, that will become uncovered throughout the course of implementing this. This is what we expect, we expect this, you know, critical evaluation that the district leadership and the building leadership will do in alignment with the things that we've said that we were going to focus on. And then, you know, like you've mentioned a few times, year two is going to be a lot, you know, you'll have much more material to say, okay, I've done a year now, I know where we need to focus, and then, you know, that will, that will help illuminate some of the areas that will need more intentionality.
Yeah, and I think a commitment to data helps with that for all of us, and some, maybe some things will just emerge naturally out of that.
If, if the out, if the outcome of, of the, of this year one work is to have the relationship and the knowledge of how the district work, you know, relationships with the people, knowledge of how the system works, and, you know, all of that stuff, in order to have a strategic planning process, I, I guess I just need to, doing things for the sake of doing, I think things get lost. But if, if the, if the goal is to create a, a place in which we can all, you know, everyone feels good and comfortable participating in a strategic plan and, and helping, helping the district move forward, then maybe that would, would help me, you know, understand, understand what, what's going on. And then, and then we can, yeah, there's lots, the harassment, intimidation and bullying, that stuff is, is going on. I think there are things that are happening that maybe we think is okay, because it's always been happening, but it's not okay.
Yep.
And in Darby's example of our special ed students not, that the gap for our special ed students, that's not okay. I know it happens in other districts, but it's still not okay. So may, maybe that, I, I can, I can put off, I can put this stuff off for a year, because we'd be working towards creating a strategic plan where we can do this. But I think we should do intentional about, about talking about, to say, we're for use as a transition year, to really start making progress with a strategic plan.
That makes sense.
Well, do you feel we've given you some direction to help you for our next meeting?
I think, I, I think so. I think to flush this out a little bit further, are you comfortable with this? I, I can get a little bit more information on the National Center valuation tool and, and see, are you more comfortable with that? Or are you more, is there a direction? Because how I write this will be to the standards of one of these, you know. And I think I saw Carol do that last year, looking at standard one and kind of A B C D, I saw her with some documents around some work, and she was sort of coding things to help with the board, hey, this work is aligned to this standard in my goals.
Yeah.
Or maybe it wasn't, it was maybe like, I don't know, it was on all standards, but it seemed like maybe it was goal-centered.
She had, I think, two strands and, no, two, I didn't get my language right, two standards and I think three strands. So one strand with one standard and then two strands with another standard. But it was based on, I think, the WASDA goals, or the WASDA.
It was definitely, it was definitely on this. I mean, because I, you know, clearly she didn't have the National Center stuff. So I'm comfortable either direction. I know these systems both pretty, I mean, pretty well. The National Center, you'll, you'll, we have a representative coming in October, that he's really familiar with this process, I think has helped guide boards in superintendent evaluation. I think that's another service that they offer. He's doing this workshop, they do some other support, including superintendent evaluation. So that, that's also, I think sometimes I, again, I know, I know what he would potentially tell you, you know, it's like, this is, the valuation of superintendents is really challenging, because you don't get to see me every day, the day-to-day work, and how do you, and I, I think Melissa's asking some good questions, right? It's challenging, and what does success look like? And what do you expect? And, and having someone facilitate and help with that process can be helpful, too. So that's an option to consider down the road.
My, I think it would be best to stick to WASDA, because the trainings you're going to go to in November, the, the organization that is a 10-minute drive from here.
Is, is their tool.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
You're going to be surrounded by that over the years.
Okay.
That way, at least you're, you're hearing and speaking the same language.
Okay. I, I can, yeah, is it kind of concurrent from everybody on that? That's fine. Good. Yeah, so I will, I will do some reflection on that. Can I, would I leave tonight thinking, taking a look at this in alignment with those, those board pillars, and picking in, you know, a couple areas of focus, the entry plan being its own, its own sort of work that will lead to, you know, just my own growth and entry into this, into the community. Perfect. Very helpful. And then we can review this all.
I think, can you, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Uh, thanks. I think, you know, it, working towards our goal to try to stay above the green line, those, I think that's why I'm getting stuck, is like, those, I want to focus on the outcomes, you know, and so, and that, that is, that, again, why I'm getting stuck, the evaluation is talking about some very detailed things, and without the outcomes. For, for me, that's what I, that's what I focus on.
Anything else in that agenda item? So the next one is probably going to be fairly quick. It's just suggestions to Kevin on how best we would like, oops, sorry about that. How best we would like him to communicate with us. Carol used what I would refer to as a newsletter template that she would fill and then send out once a week. Kevin sent us an email recently, I think, with seven bullet points on it.
Yeah, and I think I have one prepped for, I've started working on one for tomorrow, that's probably similar, about a page long, it has just some kind of bulleted items.
So why don't you share with them what you shared with me, what would be like your preferred way to give us the, the rundown of the week, if you will?
Well, and I think I'm, I, maybe before, I, I am looking at providing a bit of, I don't know, I don't want you to have things that you can get in other ways. So if you want school newsletters, you know, I'm not going to, if we have things out in every school letter, I don't see very much value in putting that, you know, you're all in, busy people. And so I don't want you to have to read something that's like, I already saw this. So I'm trying to give you some insights. So my, my methodology or thinking when I'm thinking board communication, if you're looking at a weekly, a weekly thing, which I, I really, it's, it's a nice way of me for just reflection on, what are some of the highlights of things going on? And I kind of end up covering a bit of, of all areas, touching base on this crisis and a little bit of maybe closure to that, or like, what's the next steps? And you heard that we were having a, you know, group, so a little bit of information on that. Information on a bit of like this entry plan, and I think my message today is a little bit of some takeaways from my meeting with, here's a former board member that I met with, you know, and a few of his little nuggets of wisdom that he's passed on to me that I shared. And so a few examples like that, and it could be also just some updates that occurred by weekly meetings with, with board representation. So Scott and our board members of, what are the things that we're talking about in there? And so I, I feel like one of my sort of foundational pieces are the board, no, nobody has special treatment. So if there's, if one knows it, we all should know that. And for the most part, that's kind of how I operate. So if we talk about it face to face, I'm following up in my email with, here's some things that we talked about that I thought were important for, for us to discuss. And so here's the email version, and then I welcome, and we know that when you get the email, we're not engaging in a bunch of group-wise emails, but I also want to say, like, hey, you can ask me, hey, I, I really, I need to have some questions about this individually to me, and so that's fine, or a call, or a lunch, or breakfast, or whatever we want to do. Because I want that, that's the relationship I want, and I think that's helpful, because my email will be oftentimes insufficient for some of you. I mean, it'll be like, I, this was, you didn't give us very much. But I, there's probably a reason to that, too, because you'll get something like, we had, well, we have a grievance. And so because there's a process where the grievance may come to you, I might just give you this broad view of the grievance. And I can, I will give you individually a little bit more details to it, but I'm probably not putting it in an email that's out, that's a public record. So that's kind of, that's my general approach to this, but trying to not give you a dissertation of every single blow-by-blow in every meeting I'm having, but some highlights, you know, I think I, I mentioned some of them tonight. Hey, I talked about crisis and safety and security, because that's important, it's one of those things. And I want you to know that that's some work that's going on, and I'm engaging in that, and I'm going to think about trying to find some money for them. We also have, you know, so a change in the, in the board meeting, I think we, we canceled the board meeting, so a reminder that that's canceled and a little bit of context to that. So that's, I think that's my starting place around this, and I'm not familiar, I think I've heard a little bit of feedback on this more. It's not a tool that I've used in the past, so I can learn it, if that's something that you want. And so I think that feedback.
Please don't, no.
Thank you.
I don't want that newsletter around, it's worthless to me. No, and I like the way you're headed on this. I don't need a recap of every meeting that you've been to, and I know most of them, and I was there as well, or a list of events that you went to. I want to know more about the things that are happening, that you're dealing with, or thinking about, or having conversations. That's more about, the one that came out recently was, I, I found that appealing.
Okay.
It was least useful to me.
It's not pretty, they're not pretty, they're not pictures.
I want to be able to read it, not have to zoom and spin and flip and.
I'm curious, I'm kind of hearing consensus on the smore, it's fine using email, not using that. The smore is a, is a tool our schools are using. I'm curious if your feedback is on, hey, I'm getting this newsletter and it's not very readable. I know our, I think, Lori's reached out to that.
It's just as though it's not H T M I, HTML5 compatible, that's why it's not showing on phone. That's why it's not showing on phones?
I'm not going to get into what schools can use. They can use whatever they choose.
Well, it's important to me that we can read, like.
Well, as a parent that attends a school, I find the same smore newsletter just as annoying getting it as a parent. But I have less input in that avenue.
Well, it's, so I wanted to have this conversation because I think Lori already reached out to the smore people and said, hey, we have some concerns around this. And they're like, well, what are you, what are you trying to do and can you, can you, can we duplicate it? So I will pursue this not for the board, but for our, just because I think we have a paid relationship with smore for the coming year and I want it to be better. It won't be something I will necessarily upend, but I will, can we make this more, more useful for parents? I know we're going to, I mean, one of those communication pieces, I don't know if you know this, but we will have a new website. The current, if I get this context right, was bought out by another company and so it's, there's some opportunity to us. So we'll be doing a new kind of updated website. And I, you know, those are things that are important to me around establishing, you know, you get rid of PDFs, it all needs to be readable, readable, ADA compliant, those pieces. And that gets away from PDFs and those kinds of, as much as possible, there should be very few PDFs because it's not, they don't, they don't work well on phones, they don't work well on lots of things. Other feedback on communication, I think we've already started to establish, and I can just kind of lay out some other things around, you know, we'll talk about protocols, I think in October on this, but no surprises for either of us, right? So that's certainly I'm trying to establish that. If the police are showing up at a school, I'd rather you get at least an email. If that works for you, do you want to text?
Let's address that one real quick.
Yeah.
Yes, so any time there's a police response, I would expect a text.
Okay.
I don't want to go to my email or whenever I cycle through my email to find out there's been a police response to a building.
Right.
Same thing with a student's death or an accidental accident, I don't want to find that out through email.
Perfect.
I want to know that in text right away.
So I don't even know what happened to the beer thing. Was that through email?
That's, well, yes, I agree. That's kind of what is driving this exactly because.
Yeah. Because sometimes you don't have, you always have your phone with you, but you're not going to always look at email.
If, if, if it's a little bit more lengthy, should an, should a text say, hey, I haven't, I sent you an email around this?
Yes, that's fine. That's okay.
And remind, perfect, I can do that. Do we, okay, yeah, I can do that.
If it's a sticky situation, then it's a text and I need to talk to you, then it's a phone call.
Right.
If you don't want to document it through email.
I'm also trying to be thoughtful around, you know, your own connection. So like in this particular case, I think I know Melissa had students at Black Hills. So she's, and I don't think anyone else currently does. So a call to her around the student death, around wanting you to be aware of this. I don't know if everyone needed that, a phone call regarding that, it was like, you know, but I, you certainly can. It's always different. It feels easier to call five people than seven people, so I can call all of you if on those kinds of.
Text is fine.
Text is fine and you can call me if.
Exactly.
Perfect.
Yeah, if we feel.
If you need to get a little bit, because yeah, my text probably will be a bit fairly brief. Obviously, I don't want a dissertation in a text, but yeah, you can always call me.
We just don't want to hear about it through the community first.
A hundred percent. And I think, you know, inevitably, there's always a few things that happen that way, but I, you know, again, I'm going to make every effort that that is, you're not surprised by that so that you're well prepared when someone asks you about, or when they go, I'm so sorry. And you're like, uh, what are you talking about? So I think, yeah, I think that's important. And I think vice versa, if you're hearing things, it is okay to let me know and give me a heads up and even if it turns into.
So I'm going to text you.
Absolutely.
Can you give me your cell number?
Yep.
Just so I have it.
Yep. Oh, you should share it. And you obviously, and Becky, making sure that Becky has your cell number or, you know, you have hers, you have her, because we're both really accessible.
I have yours.
I have yours. And yeah, anytime, and I would say anytime, anytime of night, any day, I do, I, I know this job there, it doesn't really end. And so, and I'm well used to that. And it's just, it's, this is what the work is. And it won't, I won't take advantage of that and I, and I don't think you will either. But I think you just need to know, it's like, just because it's 10 o'clock doesn't mean you can't text me. It's okay. I may not respond and it's like, if you really need to get ahold of me, it's like you may need to do some other things, but.
So you say that, but I got a, a call from a client or a prospect and, and I go, it's 4th of July and I go, this is a national holiday, you know, I can't do anything for you today. Don't you know it's a national holiday? So, you know, we want to be respectful of everybody.
Absolutely. And you'll start to, I mean, I've already kind of started to establish that communication with my whole team. You know, I want to be respectful of all of our employees and their weekends and nights and I don't want us emailing people on the weekend. You're, you're not going to get emails from me on a weekend, on a Sunday afternoon, not, and I'm going to try, if you're getting those from our forwarded, I'm going to try to stop those and you may get more on Monday, but like I want to respect weekends and that, having some separation and kind of after 5 o'clock for the most part, can it wait? That should be a question that we're always asking. Can this wait till tomorrow? Most of our staff are gone at 5 o'clock, so why are we sending this out? So be thoughtful of that as we are communicating with folks. I want to establish, we have our weekly, that's sort of that, I love that system. It works, something I haven't really experienced before. I think it's great. It'll be a way for us to tie and there's, you know, the opportunity for us to, you know, those individual meetings. And I, I think I might have put in my plan or I put in there like a quarterly, at least quarterly, that's sort of my goal around, that's more hearing philosophy, your philosophy of education and are we on the right path? And that guidance for me, that maybe isn't specifically to any of this. It's just, hey, your experience in the community, your experience going on in schools and a lot of our meetings in the office will be kind of, there'll be a list of things that we're trying to talk about and plan for and looking at board agendas. I think I'll add the other thing is, you'll probably see me on asking to have Becky be part of more conversations, be part of policy, the policy committee so that, because she's helping sort of facilitate that and get it to that. So I, I don't want to have to go waste her time or my time again, as I spent an hour with our committee to then turn around and spend another hour with her to try to interpret what you told me. I'd rather have the two of us heard it and I think we'll get a good chance of getting what we heard right. So she'll be in part of some of those, then you'll see her, I think, already established at our superintendent board meetings that happen weekly, that she's there, at least at the beginning, with a focus primarily on board planning, thinking ahead, agenda items, here's what we're thinking about, are there things that you want us to add? So that's what we're listening for and I want her to hear it directly and help me make sure it happens. So that's kind of that relationship. If you ever want to meet with me, she'll, she's, she's the keeper of my schedule, so we'll make sure that that happens as well. Other communication feedback? I think that helps. The text messaging, that's good, that's a good, a good direction for me and then I'll.
So let me ask the group, since you're willing to receive a text from us at all hours, is there a level of issue or concern that we also want to text at all hours? Or do we want to say?
I think we've made it pretty clear. I mean, I have. If it's going to be in the news, we need to know about it as soon as possible. So does it have to be 2 a.m.? No. Going to be first thing in the morning? Of course.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
If it happened at 2 a.m., that's what I'm saying. Are we open to that, receiving it right then or are we, we're going to say no?
I'll leave it up to you. I would say leave it up, I'd leave it up to your judgment. If the school's bringing it at 2 a.m., yeah, I need to know about it.
Yes, if the school's bringing it down.
I can't, yeah, I can't think of too many, I mean, it will be, it will be crisis to the nth level that we would be.
Like a shooting or something, you know, bomb.
A threat, a threat level that's going to impact us starting school.
Unless your judgment is superintendent.
Yeah. And I could see that that would be one case where it's like, we have some threat that's going on or some chemical spill that's happened and we learned about it in the middle of the night and I'm trying to make a decision of like canceling school and what do I do and what's the messaging? That'll be important for you to help weigh in on because it will call, I mean, those are kinds of things. If I'm calling you at 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning, there's a good chance it's going to be on the national news.
I said, there's, I was thinking, there, there's a big difference between a call and a text.
Exactly.
Because if you text the middle of the night, I'm not going to see it till the morning.
No, I get you. I think if we're, if I'm doing, I will not be texting you at 2 a.m. I may, I may send an initial text just to like, like maybe you'll hear and you'll wake up because it's like, I'm calling you in a few minutes, just beware. I'll give you a chance to call me and wake up first.
If it's on a national news level, then sure.
And I think that's probably the threshold that I'd be living is, is whatever is happening is going to be on the national news. Or state news.
There you go. If it's national news, you contact us. If it's just the local news, first thing.
First thing, yeah.
First thing.
I, I, I think that's a, again, I think we can all hope that none of that happens, but that's helpful. And I think we'll establish, again, though, I think more, more informality, I think, at our retreat.
Anything else?
Yeah, I want to add a couple more, expand this communication, which includes agendas and materials. I just want to make sure that we are committed to getting them out in the timeframes that we have our policies set around. Are you a hundred percent familiar with it?
Well, is it a, like, policy versus our, the expectation practice of that? Is that what you mean?
It's policy, yeah.
It is a written policy, like board policy?
Yes.
Of when we have it? Okay.
Yes.
I haven't read that.
It's all right.
So I, Kevin and I talked about that and I, I said, yes, with every ounce of your being, get that to us by Friday afternoon. However, there are certain times, there are circumstances that happens that keeps him from doing that. A, his computer crashed, he had to get it to us Monday.
And that's fine. That's why we give him three days and so he has until Monday of close of business.
Right. Well, I would say the goal, the goal, my goal is Friday.
It is Friday, yes. It should be Friday.
Yeah, Friday.
That's what says the policy as well. But again, things come up.
Yep, absolutely. And I think we've, we talked, and again, I think moving towards a electronic record.
So thank you for mentioning that. Let's make sure our agendas are always on the website.
So.
Including today's.
So one of the things, so moving to a, a platform like Doc, I think, is it Board Docs is what we're looking at, I think, is, is supported regionally or statewide through some of the organizations. And I think that has methodology where it's, those are all accessible.
I think we've already passed on Board Docs before.
Passed on it?
Yes.
You didn't like it?
No, we love it. I think it's a great tool. I think it doesn't, I don't think we can justify the cost. That's just my opinion.
I think it's one of those things that is like longer term, there is some benefits of having in terms of record. I, I look at this as, in terms of financials, it's not, it's not a significant financial cost.
Okay.
I mean, it's, that was sort of, but I want us to, I think you're going to hear me talk around getting away from sort of the operational expenditures that are in the less than $100,000 being a huge concern. I'm looking at long-term commitments and our, our biggest, our biggest expenditures are people. It's, you know, 80, 80% of, 85% of our expenditures are people. That's, that's where we need to be most concerned. The, the different operational things, there's a ton of that and we should learn more about it. And I don't want to waste money, but if it's a tool that is effective, it is also a tool that helps us be more efficient, it's a tool that is more, provides more transparency, which I think something like that does. You know, there's a, there's a historical record of finding things for both the community as well as the board, as well as after we're long gone versus like, I'm coming in today, it's going through emails and paper to find historical, when was the last time we talked about the levy? I can't easily find that. If it's all in an electronic board doc, you would be able, what was the, what was the agenda item? What was the discussion? You know, I want to know like, what was the parameters for the last levy? That exists at a board level. I just have to go find it in paper. So there's some, you know, so I hear what you're saying, but that's, that's kind of where I'm probably coming. You're going to hear less of getting into the weeds on some of the smaller kind of purchasing, like let's do the purchases. And I want to be frugal and thoughtful, but if it's, will help us be more efficient or if it's helpful for the organization, I don't want our folks to feel like they can't do those things. But we can talk about it. It's more of a thing that impacts you directly because you, you may have a computer in front of you versus a board packet. So you need to give me some direction on, do you want to go in that direction? The last what I heard was if your, you know, our executive assistant wants to move in that direction and she's supportive of that, then the board will support that. I can get you the financial, I don't really know exactly the cost, so maybe we can come back at a future meeting to finalize this if you want to move in that direction.
Absolutely. I'm not, like I said, the tool is great for sure. But no, I want to make sure that we are getting our agenda item, our agendas on the website like we said, because today's wasn't. It needs to be up there.
Perfect. Yep, we can do that.
I have one unrelated item that kind of fits under communication, barely. We have a policy that says our proposed budget for the next school year needs to be, again, put on the district website and available to the public here in the office as well. That's supposed to happen on July 10th. I wasn't able to locate it. I'm assuming it's not up there. I don't expect you, Kevin, to have known about this and had it up there in advance. I do, however, feel that plenty of other people were aware of that and then chose not to do it.
That's what I was wondering, because we had talked about that.
We did, specifically talked about it at length in executive session.
That was super important.
Wait, 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 wait. I believe the requirement is that it's up and posted, you know, two weeks prior to the public hearing.
It's not. It says July 10th in policy. And again, I know that's not, there's a, whatever state law is, that's fine, but our policy says July 10th.
Yeah, that, that should be changed. The, the policy should be changed. July 10th, it's due to, it's due to the E S D and then get, but.
That's not what the policy says, Melissa.
Yeah, no, I believe you. I'm just saying we should change the policy because that's just not how it works in practice.
I will pull that up and there is probably some additional context that, I'm, we're looking at some budget. I think there's been some initial outreach around. I just have some questions around this because I think there is something we submitted to the state. It's just, I'm, I'm not sure it's a hundred percent accurate. And so before I change, and it may cause a bit of a ripple through our organization if what the initial information I have is true. And so I wanted to be making sure that it's really true before I engage the board and more of this leadership team. So there is a little bit of a reason because it's like, I do have one that I received on the 10th and it's like, oh, like I, we need to do some more work on this to make sure this is accurate.
So you received something.
I had an initial conversation. I don't have an actual document, but some sort of, some outcomes that aren't, aren't currently great.
Yeah, so the whole point that it's due on the 10th is just to make sure everyone is working on it.
It's not due. It's supposed to be posted on the district website. It doesn't say about being due or the final or approved. It says proposed.
That preliminary, okay.
It's proposed. It doesn't, it's not final. It's not approved.
And it probably was in alignment, if I'm understanding, there was a proposed initial that was, that's required to be submitted to the state, which I, I don't know 100% that we submitted that, but I'm assuming we did. And so I think that must be what you're referencing.
And the reason this is, is to give people 30 days to review this beforehand.
Before the public hearing.
Yeah, before the public hearing.
Yeah, see, that's very important.
So the public hearing, it, there.
Is not scheduled.
Right. And so prior to the public hearing, you have to, you have to publicize it in the newspaper. And in that pub, in the publication, you say that there.
And that's a different policy.
I, I understand that. But the July, I'm telling you in practice, that the July 10th is just to, is just to double check the, the state process, not the policy. The process is just to get, is just to make sure that everyone is working on it.
Got it. I'm not referencing, I don't care about the state policy or anything. Worried about our district policy and communicating with our stakeholders.
Maybe I'm not talking to you then, Casey. I'm talking to Kevin.
Well, no, and I want to, I want to make sure that we follow, I, again, you'll come, you'll hear me. And it's like, I, I expect, I expect us to follow our policies. And if we're, if we can't or won't.
But to put out, to put out a budget that, the budget that's on July 10th, I mean, you could do that. The pro, the process, the budget process would have to change drastically to have it that, to have it that complete by July 10th. Because I would not want to put something out to the public that is nowhere close to what's going to be, what we're going to be having at the public hearing. I think that would be confusing.
Well, I would definitely, given.
And so I think it would be, I think it would be fair, you know, you know, if we keep the policy, Melissa just has to start her process a lot earlier.
Yeah, and I think, I think this goes, I think we'll have a more of a conversation about this because like I guess said, the policy that I, or the budget that I would have been able to propose would probably cause a bit of panic.
Causing what, how? What does that mean? I don't get that. I mean, this should be a proposed budget. We're, it's the middle of July. School starts in six weeks.
Budget is not on our agenda.